Good morning and welcome to the May 21st, 2020 Business Meeting and we'll start out with a roll call.
Yes, first Commissioner Staff Support today Christina Twilliger, Clerk to the Board, Stephen Madcor, County Council, Roll Call Chair Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Great, please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First, we are holiness meeting virtually, which you may have guessed. If you're joining us on Zoom app for this meeting and you are interested in providing public comment, we'll promote you regarding how to do that when the time is right. You will have the option of providing your comments to us live. Alternatively, anyone can send a comment to be read during the citizen communication portion of this meeting over email. Just send it in at any time during the meeting by email at clackco news@clackamas.us. Be sure to include your name and area where you are emailing from. Our first item is Gary.
Yes, we have our weekly COVID updates. We'll start with Nancy Bush, Director of Disaster Management and Incident Commander of the Emergency Operations Center. But Commissioner Savis, second question first.
Paul. Your mic's on.
Your mic's on. I just wondered if Martha could turn off her mic? If she can't, there we go. Her dogs are working, alright.
Very good, alright Nancy, please go ahead.
Alright, thank you and good morning, everyone. So we have here in Oregon, 3,801 positives, 144 deaths and 98,348 negatives. Clackamas County has 284 positives and that we went up zero overnight, so that's good. We have nine deaths and 9,336 negatives. Multnomah County has 1,018 positives, 57 deaths and 21,207 negatives. Washington County has 658 positives, 17 deaths, 13,793 negatives. And statewide, there are only 53 people with COVID, known COVID that are hospitalized, which is really good news. So I want to talk about, just real quickly, our who's open app again. And we're going to, I think, bring that up for everyone to take a look at. So we continue to get more and more businesses that are taking a look at this and also putting their information in. And in fact, we had 37 new businesses that overnight who put their information on this particular app, which was developed by our great GIS development team. So this was all developed in-house. We want to encourage businesses to please go to the app if you're open, put your information in. And if you are a consumer and you're looking for businesses, you can go to this app to see what is open in your area or anywhere here in the county. So it's already receiving quite a few hits and we want to continue to do that and promote this. So please take a look at that. And it's one of the, you know, great successes that we've had here in the last few days and it's been used quite a bit. We are working with our local communities to offer sanitation stations for those who are in need and continue to work with our underserved and vulnerable groups to see what their needs are. And as we are opening more and more businesses, we're seeing some more needs there for PPE, especially among our migrant workers, individuals who may be going back to restaurants and those types of things. So we're working with them to make sure that we can do what we can to make sure our businesses can get open if our application, when any of our application is approved. We also continue to work with our CBOs, our community-based organizations, on non-monetary donations. And it's been a great partnership or is a great partnership. We'll be having a website up soon about that. We don't have the bandwidth here to take those donations in. So we're providing the public with information about what exactly is needed by what CBO so that they, we can connect them and so we can get that moving even more quickly on that level rather than having everything run here through the county. We continue to work on hiring and training our contact tracers. And we are working on our testing contracts as well, which of course, we put in our application to the Governor's Office, you know, saying that all of that was still in motion. And we continue to work on that and making sure that we can meet the needs as we move forward. And of course, we do, we're waiting to hear from the Governor's Office on our application. We, the two counties that were denied, which is Marion and Polk, we actually did get theirs approved, I think, late yesterday. So that was in the news as well. So we wait patiently and that is my update for today.
Thank you Nancy. Gary?
First, any questions for Nancy from the Commissioners?
Sonya has her hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I was on a chamber board for Lake Oswego, a couple, was it yesterday? Gosh, we lose track of the days, don't we? There was a strong recommendation that we choose a date to reopen and let businesses know early so that there isn't confusion about that. I understand from that meeting that Washington County said they're submitting their plan. Their goal is to open on June 1st. I was just wondering if we had any more defined idea from the Governor's Office as to when it might be approved so we could pick maybe the next, a couple of days from that or we could just provide some certainty? Is there any more information?
There is no more, unless Gary's received some, since I have, there is no information on whether they're going to look at it or when they're going to try to get back to us. We do, you know, they will contact us if they have any questions they have said, but that is the only information I have.
If I can add to that, so we have only heard from the Governor's Office that they will check on a timeline and let us know. We've not heard that answer yet. I have received acknowledgement that our application was received. It was received as complete. It is now at the Oregon Health Authority for review. The Oregon Health Authority will make a recommendation to the Governor. Then the Governor will make a decision. Based on her practice up to this point, she has been making effective dates on Fridays. So she gives notice usually on Tuesday or Wednesday as effective that following Friday. So unless we hear today, if she follows that standard practice, the soonest we could open would be Friday, May 29th. Again, I don't have any further details other than what I've observed. So as soon as we know, we'll let you know.
Okay, one follow-up. I did make a statement, I just want to make sure that it's true, that what I told the Board was that we really couldn't predict because the Governor has a different set of criteria that may be beyond Clackamas County because what's happening around the state and other factors that the health authorities looking at and was why we couldn't, we just can't predict a date. But people really want that, so.
Yeah, Commissioner, I do agree, people do want that and it's, it is really hard. And we are trying to make sure we're working with our businesses to say, you need to be prepared. And the guidance is there and we're sending them to the Governor's site. There's even been some new update on some of the guidances like in the last couple of days. So we're not duplicating that. But, you know, I think, you know, we're, we're really encouraging them to be ready because we hope it's coming very soon and, yeah, we just can't predict a date at this time.
And, make sure my mic, a lot of counties have been avoiding using a date because some people jump the gun. I know Multnomah County and Washington County just said that was their goal. Anyway, Paul.
Yeah, um, thank you. I just want to just build on this conversation a little bit. Gary, you informed me yesterday, thank you for the information you just shared with the audience here today. And that is that the Governor has been making her announcements on Fridays. I learned between that period of time and now that Marion and Polk County were approved effective tomorrow, May 22nd. So hopefully, maybe we can hear that. But I guess once they're approved, that's, I mean, that's about as much notice as you get. And I think probably to postpone that, just for, my concern is we were to postpone and say, we know what? We think the Governor will do it by X date, so we'll make the, our opening a few days later. I think this might just be a few more days of hardship that might be unnecessary. So I just, at this point, I guess we'll just have to go with the flow. I didn't want to say that as fluid and dynamic as things are and with all the new information coming online, there's not really consistency of what's happening and what we know today versus tomorrow and so on. And someone said, well, geez, you know, Clark County is already considering going into phase two. Well, if anyone really looks at that, you'll realize that their phase one and phase two definitions are different than our phase, our phase one, we don't have phase two definitions in Oregon yet. But our, the phase one for Clark County doesn't look like our phase one in Oregon. So just want to point that out, that the terms are the same, the details behind it are not.
Alright, are we ready to move on?
Most, most of my questions were answered, but I was wondering, it would be advisable for you to make a phone call today to OHA Governor's Office to see if you can get some kind of a commitment on the whats and whens?
Staff is doing that as we speak, yes.
Thank you very much.
I was gonna actually text them, but that'd be great. Thank you. Alright, so the next item.
I still have an update, Chair.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Alright, thank you Nancy. Alright, so as Nancy mentioned, we're waiting to hear from the Governor on the reopening application. I do want to acknowledge our staff at the Emergency Operations Center for getting this plan, this application done. And after you approved it on Tuesday, Commissioners, they, they worked as efficiently as possible and they did to get it done by 5:00 PM that day. So I want to thank Nancy Bush, the Incident Commander of the Emergency Operations Center, and Philip Mason-Joyner, the Deputy Incident Commander, and Dr. Sarah Present, our County Health Officer. Those three worked together. They led the effort along with multiple staff in the Emergency Operations Center and many of our departments to get this done and they did. So thank you Nancy, Philip, Sarah, and all the staff for your fantastic work. Well done, bravo. So just to publicly recognize you. Commissioners, I do want to share, recognize businesses that are continuing to support COVID-19 in our community. I'll ask Dylan to please put a slide on the screen to recognize yet more support from our community. So we thank the Oregon Chinese-American Community Coalition, who donated a total of 10,095 face masks, disposable face masks, surgical masks, and face shields to Clackamas County Health Centers. That group is comprised of more than 10 local Chinese-American organizations, including the Chinese Friendship Association of Portland, the Intel Chinese Employees Network, the United Chinese Association of Oregon, and hundreds of individuals. The organization donated, also donated 1,000 face masks to the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and 1,000 masks to Clackamas Fire District. In the photo there, we see Commissioner Schrader accepting the donations. So thank you so much to the Oregon Chinese-American Community and partners for these contributions to our community. Also Commissioners, I wanted to, for the record, share the contract that you approved at your issue session on Tuesday, May 19th. It was for Health, Housing and Human Services, the approval of an agreement with Care Oregon Incorporated for COVID-19 stabilization funding. This was for our Clackamas Health Centers, for an agreement that provides stabilization funding for dental services to dental patients and provides financial stability during the COVID-19 epidemic due to temporary delay and increase in normal volumes of patients. So this is a receipt of grant funds from Care Oregon of $197,000. You did approve this on May 19th. I'm simply repeating for the record and it will show in the minutes of today's meeting. I do want to seek your approval for a statement from the Board of County Commissioners, which was emailed to you this morning. There's been one edit that was also emailed to you this morning. This would be a statement from all five of you that we would put through a press release. We would post online on our website and our social media statements just to state what you've already been sharing and we've been discussing verbally, that we've submitted our phase one reapplication. We're looking forward to the Governor approving that and seeking the partnership of our community members that we must work together, that the public has their part to do to stay safe and healthy and do their best to protect the health and public of themselves and others while we'll do our part as an organization. So I am seeking your approval or further edits, but we'd like to get this out this morning if you agree.
Paul? Yeah, Gary, did that include the last edits presented about, about an hour ago or within the last hour?
Yes, Emily, Emily provided those, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, any, do you want a motion, Gary?
I don't think we need a motion, but a, just a kind of a head nod that you agreed to do this and we'll, we'll get it out. No objections, great. So Dylan and PK staff will get that out as soon as possible. I did want to follow up on a question from Commissioner Savis at your meeting yesterday about county parks and boat ramps. So at the recommendation of our Business and Community Services Center, I am prepared to, per county code, through the operations authorizations, authorization for county operations, to tell you, we are prepared to open county parks as of June 1st, including boat ramps. The reason we are not prepared to do it this weekend for Memorial Day weekend are there are several steps that we have been in process of taking that we're not finished with yet. First are completing our seasonal hires to staff the parks to finalize signage and hand sanitizing stations and areas at all 18 park facilities, which is not finalized yet. There are some shelters and structures that need to be secured and prepared for usage. There are some equipment inspections that are not yet complete. There are some hazard tree inspections that are being taken place and limb removals that are not finalized yet. All to say is we're almost there, but we will not be ready by this weekend. But we will be ready by June 1st. So that is my intent to open county parks on June 1st unless you have an objection. But I'm sorry, we just can't get it done by Memorial Day this weekend and I don't want to pressure staff to work faster than they already are because I want to make sure that we're doing this right so that it's ready for June 1st. But unless you object, we're going to open our county parks then on June 1st. Do you have any questions or feedback about that, Commissioners? Seeing a thumb up, thumbs up? Okay, very good. With that, let me check my notes very quickly. That is my update for you Commissioners. So unless you have any questions, we can move on to the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
I don't see any questions, so I'd like to announce that the Board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority on the next item. And with that, I would like to introduce our Housing Authority Commissioner Anne Lindstra. Anne, good to see you.
Thank you.
And I would ask the Clerk to read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda by title.
Yes, I should unmute. Let me go ahead and do that. Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Approval to execute multiple lease agreements between Housing Authority of Clackamas County and service proprietors that operate special needs housing.
That's it?
I just wanted.
Alright, does anyone wish to remove that item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move, we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
It's removed in second that we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Any further discussion?
Just wanted to comment that those are some of the longest lease contracts I think I've ever seen.
Alright, seeing no requests, please pull the Commission.
Commissioner Lindstra? Aye. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humberston?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you Anne very much for coming in today and we'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll now adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the next item, which are two public hearings. Go ahead.
Thank you. The first public hearing Commissioners is a second reading of Ordinance 04-2020, Amending Clackamas County Code Chapter 2.05.200, Layoff and Seniority of the Personnel Policies and Procedures for Clackamas County Employees on Declaring an Emergency. We have Andrew Naris from County Council to present.
Good morning Commissioners. As Gary said, this is the second reading of this ordinance and it does amend the county code to eliminate bumping rights for non-represented employees only in the event of a layoff. The ordinance is intended to make the layout process more efficient and to ensure that we're retaining employees with the knowledge, skills, and abilities for their positions. The change would bring us in line with other jurisdictions who do not give bumping rights to non-represented staff. And finally, this would only impact our non-represented staff and would not impact our unionized represented staff. We ask that the Board adopt this ordinance and declare an emergency and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? I don't see any, so, let's see. Well, with that, we'll open the public hearing and ask Dylan to please moderate this portion. And Dylan?
Yes.
See if anyone out there has any questions.
Alright, thank you very much Chair Bernard. I'm Dylan Blaylock with Public and Government Affairs. I'll be coordinating both public comment for these public hearings and later on for general comment. If any attendees would like to provide a comment specific to this public hearing, amending the code for layoffs and seniority of the personnel policies and procedures, you can do so now by utilizing the raise hand feature on Zoom. Again, we will open up public comments on any topic related to county business in a little while. But if you have a comment related to this code change, please select the raise hand button on Zoom. And for anyone on the phone, you can hit star nine and that lets me know that you have a question or comment. So please do so now. Seeing none, Chair.
Alright, with that, I will entertain a motion.
Or in order, you have to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman?
Oh yeah, that's true. I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
There a second?
Second.
It's removed in second that we read the ordinance by title only. Please, Clerk, please pull the Commission. Oh wait, yes, yes. Pull the Commission.
Okay, Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humberston?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. I'll ask the Clerk to read the ordinance by title only. Oh, did I already do that? Now I'm getting confused. Okay, so the Clerk read the ordinance by title only.
Okay. Let's see. It's the second reading of Ordinance number 4-2020, amending Clackamas County Code Chapter 2.05.200, layoff and seniority of the personnel policies and procedures for Clackamas County employees and declaring an emergency.
Oh, so with that, with that, I'll ask for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's removed that we adopt Ordinance number 04-2020, amending Clackamas County Code Chapter 2.05.200, layoff and seniority for personnel policies, procedures for Clackamas County employees and declaring an emergency. So I'll ask the Clerk to please read, take a poll.
Okay, Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humberston?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Alright, with that, we will announce that the Board will recess as Board of County Commissioners and convene as North Clark Park and Recreation District for the next item. And Gary, what is that item?
Alright, so next is a public hearing, a resolution authorizing the request for proposals method to obtain a construction manager, general contractor for the Milwaukee Bay Park project. We have Heather Cook from North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and Ryan Rice from our procurement division to present.
Yeah, hello, thank you. Good morning, everybody. My name is Ryan Rice with Procurement and we're here today to discuss with you an exemption process which would allow the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District to use an alternative procurement process of a request for proposal, an RFP, for the selection of a construction manager, general contractor, known as a CMGC, for the Milwaukee Bay Park project. This project will complete the park by developing three acres with pathways, social gathering areas, nature and water play areas, and other features, making this a district-wide amenity. With me this morning is our project manager from NCPRD, Heather Cook, and she can help answer any project-specific questions that you may have. But we are seeking the process approval here. The LCRB, along with Oregon Statue, empowers the Board to grant an exemption to the standard bidding process and can authorize the use of an alternative method. We are requesting the approval to use the request for proposal process as that alternative method today. Traditionally, public improvement projects utilize a standard bidding process. In short, a project is published with a bid schedule, engineered specifications, site drawings, and other documentation. The selected contractor for this method is determined by the lowest bid, so price is our driver for this type of bid process. Conversely, a request for proposals is a process where we select the vendor based upon subjective factors such as experience, approach, project team, and price. The RFP process is commonly used for projects that are more complex or have special conditions similar to our Milwaukee Bay project. Through the RFP process, we will select a contractor and use the CMGC method. The CMGC method is where the owner hires the construction contractor to provide feedback during the design phase before the start of construction. The benefits of the CMGC method include fostering innovation, mitigating risk, improving design quality, improving cost control, and optimizing construction schedules. The other benefit of the CMGC method is that the design firm and construction contractor will develop a guaranteed maximum price, known as a GMP, to ensure that the project is completed within scope, timeline, and budget. So in order for the Board to authorize an alternative process, it must approve two findings. One, the exemption is unlikely to encourage favoritism in the awarding of public contracts or substantially diminish any type of competition. And two, awarding a public improvement contract under the exemption will likely result in substantial cost savings and other substantial benefits to the public agency. So for the first regarding, the first finding regarding competition, the use of the RFP process ensures maximum competition for both the contractor and the subcontractors. The contracting opportunity will be broadly published and there are requirements that place, that will require the general contractor to adhere to prevailing wage and boiler requirements as well as conduct outreach to minority, women, and emerging small businesses. The second finding is regarding substantial cost savings and benefits. This project specifically, having a CMGC onboard during the design will help identify efficiencies, evaluate alternative options, provide creative value engineering, provide real-time market pricing, and identify the most cost-effective methods in sequencing. The CMGC can coordinate with the design staff and teams on techno complexities early on in the project, making them less costly to be addressed early rather than if they needed to be addressed later in the design or even in the construction phase. Primarily, you're going to see this with site conditions and access, unique project elements and schedule and financing. And finally, the CMGC process provides an accelerated timeline allowing the project to meet third-party financial milestones and mitigate inflation risks. So for those reasons, we are recommending adoption of the Resolution for Approval of the RFP Method to select a CMGC contractor. So for those reasons, we are recommending adoption of the resolution for approval of the RFP method to select a CMGC contractor for our Milwaukee Bay Park project. Are there any questions?
Can't hear you, Jim.
Paul and then Ken.
Yeah, is it, my question is not for Ryan. I, my question is more about the project, so is this an appropriate time to, maybe, maybe Heather can answer the questions? Okay, so thank you, Ryan. Understand what you, what you're proposing, and we've done that before. Don't have a, don't have an issue with that per se. But reading the packet, it seems to make it clear that what's, what's in there in the packet is the mention of the project being about nine million dollars. When with this, when with, when this was before the board, and we discussed this, I had some questions then that I asked, and I got some answers, and I just want to, and the answers weren't exactly clear. And in the packet today, it's suggesting that the, the, these monies will be coming from system development charges. So where are the nine million dollars derived?
Sure, we have a, it's a diverse funding package, as, as you can imagine, and as we've discussed before in our meetings with you, we have, we have to bring a lot of different partners to the table to, to fully execute this project and provide full funding, and we cannot move forward with construction. We can do pre-construction and work with the CMG, but we wouldn't trigger construction work until that full funding package is arrived at. And we've been working very focused, in a focused way with the City of Milwaukee and other partners on that funding package primarily over the past year. So that nine point six million, I am just gonna pull up in front of me, this is a a table that we had at our February eighteenth policy session, and we estimated in that that our funding package would include two point one million from NCPRD Zone One funds. The city will also be planning to contribute one million dollars. And then we have local share monies, which will also be going through a discussion process. Those are from the Metro Bond, and that, we're estimating up to three million. And then we have competitive grants, which we estimate at about two point five million, and we just received word two weeks ago along those lines that we will have, that we have our application recommended for one million dollars in funding from the Land and Water Conservation Fund. So we're really bringing together a number of different partners, which is, you know, what these big projects require.
Okay, thank you for that, that breakdown. What we discussed back on February eighteenth was, I believe, the grant there as well, applying for the grant. Is that correct?
We, we presented the grants and middles, let's see, it would have been March, yeah, March nineteenth.
Okay, and at that time, I, I had asked about what the matching funds were for that, and I got an email, or the board got an email yesterday saying that we, you know, we perhaps could be awarded as much as a million dollars for that. And then, so my question to staff back, and I got a response, my question was, what's, what's the requirement from NCPRD for matching funds? That was, and this, what I got back from Scott was a million dollars of matching funds that would be derived from SDCs. So is that on top of the two point one million?
No, that's, that's part of the one, that's part of the two point one that I mentioned. So we, when we outlined that funding package, we had to take into account what those matching requirements would be. And so the Land and Water Conservation Fund and the local government grant and the metro grants all require for districts, agencies of our size require a fifty percent match. So we basically, it's, it's allowing us to leverage our local dollars.
I, I, I know this project has been on, been going on for a long time. I know that Commissioner Bernard, when he was mayor, and even probably before being mayor, was deeply involved in this project. I know it means a lot to the City of Milwaukee. My comments are not critical, and hopefully they'll be taken constructively, but my, my concern has been about, and I know this COVID thing's even made it more complicated, but pre-COVID, my, my concern has been with this project, or maybe other projects within CPRD, is that the district advisory board has had little, very, very little, let me just say, very, very, very little involvement on a lot of these projects, and this is one of them. And, and yet, we'll be, we're using SDCs from the district that were derived from unincorporated areas, primarily, most of that, most of those dollars derived from Zone One came from unincorporated areas. And, and not a lot of involvement again, and it seems that there ought to be more public involvement. It, it, when I read the packet, it came as a little bit of surprise that we're still moving forward, and we still haven't had that board meeting that we had discussed with the, with the Board of Directors of NCPRD for that scheduled meeting, and granted, the COVID situation has delayed that. But it seems that obviously this project's still moving forward in many ways. I'm not saying that it shouldn't move forward, but, you know, the public processes have not kept up. We have not mated that together. And so that's, that's, that's one concern I have. The other concern I have is that we also discussed, and Scott did share, that there would be an agreement with the city to make sure that any monies that were expended, should they, should they at any time not be part of the district, that those monies would be somewhat, not return, but compensated back to the, to the district on some kind of a basis. So there's an agreement that the monies being spent aren't stranded, and, and, and not at a loss for the ratepayers of the NCPRD. So is there any progress on that agreement? I don't see any agreement as, as such. My concern is, I have, we have no, have had no update other than here we are today.
Yeah, I think I can address a couple of those briefly, and then I could potentially take additional questions back. But the, on the second point regarding compensation, there isn't an agreement yet, but before we go into construction, we will be providing, working on an IGA with the City of Milwaukee, since they are the property holder. They're a member of our district as the, as the rest of the members are, but they specifically own the land, so we needed a kind of an extra layer of agreement with them about our ongoing maintenance and operations, and we'll be looking at terms in that agreement. So that will definitely be something that we will be working on with County Council and bringing to the board for approval when, when it's time for that. So I definitely note your comment and know that that will be something that we'll, we will be discussing. Regarding the public process, we, our last update was before the, before the COVID break. It was in February to the DAB, so I'm, I feel lucky that we had a chance to update the DAB during that time. As far as ongoing discussions about funding, there is going to be a public process to discuss local share, and those, Metro is still laying out their criteria for that local share and what they will be asking local agencies to provide in terms of documenting their own processes. So we've been waiting for some guidance from Metro so that we can roll out those conversations publicly. And we'll, you'll definitely be, all of you will be hearing from us about that process, because those will be public discussions.
Well, thank you for your response. I just want to highlight, I understand the local share and Metro's responsibility for public involvement. That's one-third of the pie or the, the cost of this. So the remaining six point million dollars minus the city's one million, that makes it five, there's five million dollars of NCPRD monies, it appears, by just going over the math that you, you prescribed. And so I'm just concerned about from public process. I think we have a fiduciary responsibility as the Board of Directors for NCPRD, and one, a public process commitment, and that also involving the DAB at, not just a presentation, but this whole, my, my concern was then and still is now, is that the whole commitment of two point one million dollars was not ever brought before the, the DAB or the Board of County Commissioners or the Board of NCPRD. It was just presented and with a commitment already made to the City of Milwaukee. And I, I think that there's a step missing. Unless I missed a meeting, I'm just concerned, I'm not, I, I know that's not all in your, in your, not all your responsibility, I'm not being critical. I'm just thinking that this is a lot of money. NCPRD has got a substantially unincorporated, and yet, we have not had any sizable projects really been done or expended in the unincorporated area for a very, very long time, and, and that's, that's something that's got the ire up of a number of people in the area. So I just wanted to express that. I'll be supporting this today, don't get me wrong. I'm not against the project, don't get me wrong. But we've got to realize that there's a, there's a big chunk of the district that's not being adequately, adequately served, and I think we're missing the boat here on public process.
All right, Ken?
I had a question on a different tack, I guess I would say. Would this project be a project where we could, could, could consider a project labor agreement?
Typically, what we have, and if Ryan has more details, I'd welcome him to jump in, but typically on this project, we would have what's in the RFP in the contract versus a separate labor agreements, but that does include ensuring boldly prevailing wage, and it does ensure outreach to minority women and emerging small business. I think that, that would be what I understand. Ryan, do you have anything to add on that?
Yeah, that's correct.
I mean, obviously, it's, it's the decision of the board, but I would like us to consider this as an opportunity for a project labor agreement. We are looking at that for the courthouse. This would be an early opportunity to maybe shake out some of the details of a project labor agreement, how it would work on, on a much smaller scale. If you could look, I would appreciate it if you could look into that opportunity. Obviously, the other members of the board may have to weigh in on this, but it was just, I thought this might be a great opportunity to to really try this out for the first time.
Well, well, you know, I think we're pretty far along in this agreement. I'm pretty far along on this project. I mean, so.
I, I think it's one of those things that could be done simultaneously, and I don't think it delays anything, but if, you know, and I don't want to delay anything or impact your, your grant applications, because I think the project's been on the books for quite a long time. But if we could look at to see if this is an opportunity that doesn't delay things, I would appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, I, I'd just like to add that I've seen, and, and this is only in the past couple of years, numerous presentations on this project. Not only in front of our board, but also at the advisory committee, and I've seen some public ones at the City of Milwaukee. I think it's followed a very transparent process, and I can honestly tell you that I, twenty-one years at least ago, I worked on this project. I was the chair of the Riverfront Board, and I'm very happy to see this finally move forward. And I think that Milwaukee has been a great partner with Clackamas County, and this project being of regional significance. I actually put my boat in the other day from there with no fish aboard. But anyway, so I look forward to supporting this project. Any other questions? But with that, I'll entertain a motion.
You have to open the hearing first.
Oh. This, oh, this is the one with the hearing. Okay. All right, with that, I'll open a public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. And Dylan Blaylock will yeah, take care of this part of it.
Thank you, Chair Bernard. Again, if any attendees would like to provide a comment specific to this public hearing, the Milwaukee Bay Park project, you can do so now by utilizing the raise hand feature on Zoom. If you're on the phone and you want to give a comment, please hit star nine to let us know. Again, we'll open public comments on any topic related to county business in a little bit, but please hit the raise hand button if you are interested in this particular public hearing. Seeing none, Chair.
All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion. All right, I'll make a motion. We have moved to, okay, go ahead.
I, I found it.
Sorry.
I move, we approve the resolution authorizing the request for proposal method to obtain a construction manager, general contractor for the Milwaukee Bay project, or Park project.
Second.
Okay, it's removed in second that we approve a resolution authorizing the request for proposal method to obtain a construction manager, general contractor for the Milwaukee Bay project. Any further discussion? All right, with that, please pull the commission.
Commissioner Fisher?
Where'd she go?
Lights off.
I try to use the spacebar. Sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't, so sorry about that. Aye.
Commissioner Humbirdston?
Aye.
Commissioner Service?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Bernard?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, and thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item, which is North Clackamas Park and Recreation District Consent Agenda. And I'll ask the clerk to read the North Clackamas Park and Recreation District Consent Agenda by title.
Approval of Amendment Number Two to the Interagency Agreement between North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and Health, Housing and Human Services, Social Services Division for Service at the Milwaukee Center.
Do any commissioner wish to remove this item from the consent agenda? It doesn't look like it, so I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of Amendment Number Two to the Interagency Agreement between North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and Health, Housing and Human Services, Social Service Division for Service at the Milwaukee Center.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve. Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, NCPRD Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? Okay, please pull the commission.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbirdston?
Aye.
Commissioner Service?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And now I'll announce that the board will adjourn as North Clackamas Park and Recreation District and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for remainder of the item, and I'd ask the clerk to please read the consent agenda.
All right, I'm gonna pull it up. Approval to apply for a comprehensive opioid stimulant and substance abuse site-based program grant. Approval of a federal sub-resispient grant agreement with Ant Farm, Inc. to provide youth prevention coordination for rural Clackamas County and Sandy and Estacada. Approval of Amendment Number One to intergovernmental agreement with State of Oregon Housing and Community Services Department to administer rental relief program funds. Approval of the contract with Eagle Elsner, Inc. for the Highland Paving Project. Approval of previous business meeting minutes. Approval of contract between Clackamas County Department of Human Resources and Navia Benefit Solutions, Inc. for flexible spending account FSA services. Approval of local grant agreement between Clackamas County and Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon for MISO to provide technical assistance to businesses and a small grants program on behalf of Clackamas County in an effort to support the local business community impacted by COVID nineteen pandemic. And approval of a contract agreement number four with James W. Fowler Company for the Tri-City Water Resource Recovery Facility solids handling improvement project.
Microphone? Now I don't feel so bad.
No, it's, I see it every time I'm on. Does a commissioner wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion?
I'd like to make three comments. I'd like to make three comments, Mr. Chairman.
Only, you only get two and a half.
Just that there's three things on here that I would think are really critically important at this point in time. The first one is the opioid treatment program. We know that that has been a problem nationally. And, and I appreciate Health, Housing and Human Services efforts to help out in that area. The second one is an under department of transportation and development is a project that I believe is one of about ten projects. We would not have been able to do without the VRF funding. I don't have the master list in front of me, but I believe this is one of those projects. So we are moving forward on that and I, there is at least ten projects in the queue that are a direct result of our VRF funding. And then the last one is, I'm really glad to see us moving forward quickly on the MISO grant. We have a lot of business people out there that need some help. We need to get them back open and working, hopefully safely. And I really appreciate staff getting on that quickly.
All right. Now, did I get a motion in a second? Yes.
Yes.
Please pull the commission.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Humbirdson.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
And Chair Bernard.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And the next item is Citizen Communication. Again, Dylan Bladlock will take over.
Okay, thank you, Chair. For all attendees, this is the time of the meeting for general comment related to any county issue. If any attendees would like to provide a comment, you can do so now. By utilizing the raise hand feature on Zoom. If you're on the phone, you can hit star nine and let me know that you have a question. Chair, I also have two emails thus far to relay after we first take the Zoom and the phone calls. I see one person, one Zoom attendee has a question, so I will move her over. It is Jennifer Stevens. And Jennifer, if you can go ahead and unmute yourself, very good. And if you could give your name, your area of residence, your area or city of residence, and keep your comments under three minutes. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Sorry, I forgot to log out of my other half's Zoom account. It's Bill Osborne here from Gladstone. Uh, first, I want to say congratulations to Commissioner Schrader. It was a great campaign running against you. We kept it clean. We kept it pretty quiet. I think it was the friendliest campaign out of the the commissioner campaign. So I appreciate running against somebody as professional as you are, and I congratulate you on your win. Um, I would like to talk about a couple of things. One, about the parks. I'm glad to see they're opening. I, I would like to see them open a little sooner if that's possible. Certainly, I know there's some projects. And I suspect part of the timing is to push things past Memorial Day weekend where there's expected to be a lot of people out the nice weekend. So I, I would encourage, I guess, if there's any possibility to expedite the maintenance that needs to be done. I, I understand if it falls past Memorial Day weekend, I'd love to see it open today, right this very second. But if that can't happen, maybe a little sooner than June first, the sooner the better, I think, for everybody. I, I, you know, I'm afraid to see what our suicide rates are going to be like through this thing. Certainly, parks aren't going to fix all of that. But they certainly give people something to help de-stress and get out there and and realize there's other people there, even if they are at a safe distance and potentially wearing a mask too. I think that's really good right now for, for all the people that are home suffering. I also, and I don't know whether this is a reality or not, I've seen it on social media that Mary S. Young Park is being looked at as potentially a place to isolate homeless people who are COVID positive. And, and I would encourage, if that is true, that an alternative be made. I think we have a lot of industrial property and such. I see the city of Portland, which has a heavier concentration of homeless people utilizing areas like that. And I, I, I just, again, you know, with parks, I like them and I, I would like to not see them used. Used for housing people, you know, with, with the COVID or the homeless in general. I sympathize with them, but doing a lot of solve cleanups in the area, they don't leave their area very nice behind them. So, and I think that's what most people's objection are in the camps. It's just the, the aftermath. So again, that's all I have for today. Thanks for, for having me.
Uh, let me tell you that that was in the original draft, was removed. But under our general emergency program, lots of parks are shown as in a dire emergency. That would be a place. I talked to the mayor last night, Mayor Axelrod, told him it had been removed from the, the plan. And we talked as a commission that should everything go absolutely crazy. We may have to use some parks, but we don't anticipate that. And it has been removed from the draft plan. Just want to let you know. Thanks for your call. Gary, did you want to add anything?
Oh, you just answered what I was gonna say. Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll move on. Any other questions? Oh, you have some emails.
Yes, I do not see any more questions via Zoom, but if attendees have any, again, please just raise your hand or if you're on the phone, star nine. Two emails this morning, Chair and Commissioners. The first from Darren Gunter of Wilsonville. Dear Board, thank you for taking my question about food banks and food insecurity last week. I wanted to correct one statement. There is money from the county general fund that goes to traffic safety programs. The same for county parks. It is this money and similar programs that I urge commissioners to consider investing instead into more food insecurity programs. Unemployment does continue to rise at shocking levels. I have seen that food banks are running out and we're looking at more hungry people. Please keep this in mind with your budget decisions next week. Thank you all for the consideration.
Thank you. And next, anyone want to respond? I, I can tell you one thing that is the general fund funding roads? I don't think so. A, any traffic safety issues? I don't think so. And parks money is restricted money. So I think those are the facts. Yep, I know that. I just want to add that we will be considering a grant program. And that program will go, those grants will go to people. At least this is my desire. Will go to address the food. The lack of food or, you know, that, the, the challenge. Anyway, any next email?
Yes. This one comes from Lori Kimmel from Beaver Creek. A question regarding contact tracers. You have had since late January to hire contact tracers. Why wasn't there prior planning to get these tracers hired or moved into these positions?
Money. We, to put on a bunch of employees with some medical background costs money. We are waiting for an assurance from the governor who would pay for it. And we did get that assurance. And unlike Multnomah, Washington and the city of Portland, the CARES money, Clackamas County didn't get any. That all went to the state and the state is handling that. And we are invoicing the state to cover our expenses when that occurs. And we did not have that information until, I'm gonna say, last week. Think that answers that. Any more questions?
Seeing none, Chair.
All right. With that, we'll move on to our extraordinary county administrator updates.
Thank you, Chair. I did just get a text from our Director of Transportation and Development. And yes, there is a very small amount of general fund that goes to the traffic safety program. Not road paving and maintenance, but the traffic safety program. So that was accurate. I will state that. Sorry, I thought, I didn't have that. I, I can't have the whole budget memorized, so I didn't realize that, but I appreciate Dan Johnson correcting that. My update for you commissioners is this week is National Public Works Week, which raises awareness of the tremendous effort and resources required to ensure safe and reliable infrastructure. Here are two examples of how Clackamas County supports public works in our county. First, Clackamas Water Environment Services, or Wes, operates and maintains five wastewater treatment facilities, twenty-three pumping stations and more than three hundred and forty miles of pipes for its one hundred and ninety thousand customers. In addition to the Eighty-Second Drive Pedestrian Bridge that connects Gladstone and Oregon City. Throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, Wes employees have been on the job, practicing social distancing and other safety guidelines to continue servicing their customer needs. Next, our Department of Transportation and Development, or DTD, maintains more than one thousand four hundred miles of county roads, two thousand four hundred miles of rock shoulders and repairs countless potholes every year. DTD staff also oversee twenty-six thousand road signs, one hundred and sixty-five traffic signals, twenty-one miles of guardrail and one hundred and eighty county bridges. They've been doing all of that while practicing social distancing and safety protocols over the last few months. So thank you to our talented staff in Wes and DTD for all they do every day and our public work staff in honor of National Public Works Week. A calendar update for you all, commissioners. As you know, next week, May twenty-sixth through twenty-ninth, you will not have work sessions or a business meeting. Instead, you will be in budget committee hearings and meetings all week. Beginning Tuesday, May twenty-sixth through Friday, May twenty-ninth, and extending into the following week if necessary. All of these meetings are accessible to the public. They will be on the county webpage, on our budget page, which I'll ask our staff to please link to the homepage. You can see every department's budget, the entire county budget, my budget message. Everything is online as of Tuesday of this week, so the public may pursue that and review it. There is a public hearing for the public to comment on the county budget on Thursday, May twenty-eighth at five thirty PM. That will also be online and, and all that information is on the county website. So I encourage everyone to please see how your county is proposing to spend its money. As you know, I present to you commissioners as your budget officer, a proposed budget. And then the county budget committee makes a decision on the budget, which is then forwarded to the county commissioners. And you make the final decision in June. A reminder also that Monday, May twenty-fifth is Memorial Day. We will honor that holiday here at Clackamas County. And as you know, Memorial Day is to honor those women and men who died serving our country in the United States military. And we will honor them and thank them for their service on Monday. That is my update, commissioners. You're muted, Jim. Jim, you're muted.
Uh, move on to Commissioner Communications and Paul, you're up first.
Okay, thank you. I did want to just share that I also heard about the concerns about Mary S. Young Park. And it was a surprise to us on Tuesday, I believe, when we discussed it. It was in the, in the packet. But I had no idea it was in the packet. We did discuss it on Tuesday and it was subsequently removed from the packet. But just got a lot of feedback since the article came out and Hamplin Media about that. This morning, we had our JPAC meeting, Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation. Big discussion on the, on the bond, transportation bond coming in November. Metro will be placing another ask. And I guess we still don't know. Jim, you're the lead person on that. Still don't know exactly what the mix of funding sources will be. And what the impacts will be. They want to see from the jurisdictions a letter of commitment sooner rather than later. I know that we spoke about that. And I'm hoping that we can nail down the, the, the details before we are committed to a letter of commit, of commitment. It seems we got to have some solid information about, number one, the cost, number, number two, what we're going to get. And I have gotten a number, quite a bit of feedback, outreach from a number of folks coming out of our C-four meeting, our C-four metro subcommittee meeting and others with regard to projects they think that should be in there that are not in there. And the fact that we've got a lot of needs for other modes and transit connections that we're not going to achieve out of this for Clackamas County. I think there was a, a good argument just the other day for we need more connections, we need more coverage. And all that's really being offered is maybe better service on the existing lines. And that last mile connection and is something that's important and it's really not being addressed in this measure. So for all those billions of dollars that in the ask, there's not a lot of stuff that's going to help people or get new, new, new transit in Clackamas County. And that's, that's a big issue. So I'm hoping that we can, number one, have some level of input, maybe that's too late. But again, they'll be asking for a letter of commitment, you know, from us. Also, shortly after this meeting, I've got literally seven meetings the rest of the day regarding a number of things, including transportation. And the tolling is now going to be, process is going to be rolling out forward. And we had a discussion on that yesterday morning. That'll be a very touchy subject because there's not a lot of very, there's not very many people in Clackamas County that are in favor of that. And that's being led by ODOT instructed through the legislature as a result of HB twenty seventeen. So just want to give you a brief update on that. We need to keep our eyes on that. I think it's a, a very difficult time knowing that a lot of people lost their jobs. A lot of businesses are struggling. And I'm not sure that adding or asking the voters for more money in November is the, the best timing. And maybe we have, maybe we have an opportunity to reconsider that, but just want to share that. I do want to say, wish everyone a happy Memorial's Day weekend. And, and remember those who have fought for our country and, and sacrificed on our behalf and honor them. I want to also ask everyone to really be careful and be cautious. Take every precaution you can for social distancing and wearing face mask and taking all those things because we don't want another outbreak. We don't want to have to go back into a pre-phase one mode of basically another lockdown. So just ask everyone to be cognizant of that and take every precaution, respect everyone's rights. And at the same token, we don't want people to get infected and have this crisis grow any, any greater than already is. So those are my comments for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Martha.
Well, it's been a, it's been an interesting few days. I'm exhausted, but I'm still vertical. And I'm just glad that I can be back with my colleagues. I would like to give a shout out to my older son, however, because he's an apprentice right now with the plumbers and steam fitters. And going to work at Intel. And I'm proud to say he came home the other night and he said to me, Mom, I'm an essential worker. And I said, well, I know you are. So it's been really good to see that happen and, and how well he's doing in the apprenticeship program. And you know, I'm, I'm, came from a union family and I'm glad to see that we're going to have some more union folks in my immediate family now as well. So that's a good thing. Other than that, there's not too much. I'm still at home with barking dogs. Which, which can be somewhat problematic. I did the other day go to the Emergency Operations Center and Ken, I wanted to apologize to you. We should have asked, you should have been there, you and Jim too, with the China piece. I don't even know how that got scheduled, quite frankly, but it was really nice to be there and it was really, again, to reiterate that we have a lot of opportunities to continue that friendship. To continue when trade picks up again. Kind of work with our international trade folks and also really build the relationships with these folks, helping us with getting masks and materials. So I just wanted to thank, thank the staff for pulling that together. That was a really good event. So that's about all I have right now. So.
Thank you.
Carry on.
Ken.
I will be, I will be brief. On a, on a family note, my son and my daughter-in-law are nurses working in facilities where people are confined. And so far, they have managed to dodge the bullet, if you will, of, of COVID-19. And a great deal of that is as a direct result of following the protocols that we've been asked to follow as citizens.
wearing masks, keeping social distances, keeping your hands clean, all keeping your hands away from your face as much as possible, those kinds of things. So I really, really want to emphasize how important it is going forward. I'm asking our business community and those folks who are skeptical of this, please err on the side of caution. We don't want to go backwards. Right now, Clackamas County in this region is doing better than the other counties. And we want to keep it that way for a lot of reasons. We don't want more people getting sick if we can help it. We don't want to overload the system and we don't want to see businesses close down again. Because if we fail, the state government will do it again. And we don't control the state government. So all we can do then is react and I don't want us to be in that position. So I hope this message gets out to folks. Please be cautious. It benefits us all. On different issues, the Fair Board met and basically ratified the governor's decision that we would not have the county fair this year. My understanding, however, is that there will be some 4H activities at the fairgrounds. They will be maintaining social distancing and those kinds of protocols as much as they can. Hopefully that goes well. And then the Fair Board is looking for other ways to have events that can bring the public together safely. Things such as a drive-in movie, that sort of thing, where folks can be in their cars, turn to an AM station, watch a nice movie. And yet still have some social contact. So hopefully they'll be creative and do some more activities like that. And finally, the French Prairie meeting yesterday essentially was a sharing by Clackamas County staff and our neighbors in Marion County about what we're doing with the reopening aspect of things. I'm hopeful on the reopening because from what I heard, Marion County was not in as good a position as we are and they got an okay. So that's hopeful that we'll get an okay quickly. Look forward to hearing on that and thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank everyone for their incredible input to us as we are decision makers that cannot make decisions in a vacuum. So a thank you to our community, a special thank you to Christina sitting there who has to listen to me ask for access to all of the BCC emails, which I did read and so appreciate the input. Very, very helpful. I also want to make a comment. This was election week. We did have a victory with the homeless services measure. I spent many an evening calling voter, talking about concerns. Unfortunately, I couldn't talk to everyone, but one of the main concerns that I heard about this measure was the concern about Metro not having a plan and Metro being the government responsible for this. And I just want to comment on that, that for every voter that I did actually talk to, and I explained that, oh, wait, Clackamas County has been planning for these services for the last two years. And we don't want Metro to dictate to us how we are going to address our population. And every time I had that conversation, I changed a no to a yes with that voter. Unfortunately, I couldn't call everybody and we couldn't get that message out strong enough. But as the public has been diligent in communicating with us on COVID-19, I am requesting that you also be diligent in communicating with us as we really put together how we are going to execute these funds and to help our population who is unsheltered. This COVID crisis has changed everything. It's a totally different ballgame now because we have over 90 people right now that are being sheltered in motel vouchers. And we have to figure out how are we going to transition people housing? These funds do not start coming in until 2021. So there's a gap time. We know there will be funds. We know, given that the forecast that happened at the state level yesterday, we anticipate less funds than was a pre-COVID anticipated. So what I'm saying is we have our work cut out for us, not only in reopening because of the COVID crisis, but we have to work on making sure our safety net is solid for our most vulnerable communities. And we need you side by side with us. And I do want to say a special thank you to Chair Bernard. Chair Bernard, you have been extraordinary through this crisis. And it is with great sadness that I will miss you come January. But we have months left together and we are going to work really hard to stay as committed and dedicated to getting this important work done. And I do want to give a special welcome in January to Smith. She will be our chair come January. I've always had a positive relationship with her and I expect that we will all be able to work effectively together. I congratulate her and Jim will always be a precious part of my life and my journey and my mentor and I really, really appreciate you. So thank you.
Thank you. Like Gary mentioned, we won't be having a meeting next week. And my guess is the governor is probably going to approve our plan. And, you know, before we're, we have our next meeting. So it's very important. I was just reading the CDC says there will be a second wave. And we need to be prepared for it and that's what we're doing with our plan. And so at this, once we open, it's no longer our responsibility. It's on the citizen, on the residents' back to take care of one another. So work hard, wear your masks, stay apart, wash your hands, do everything you can to protect everybody else. And hopefully they'll do the same for you. If we have to close down, you think it's bad now, it's going to be a lot worse in the next round. So please, let's not go there. So work really hard. I also want to thank folks in our emergency management office, Nancy Bush, Dr. Present and all the people who are working the desks, working to get the supplies we need to reopen, contacting the hospitals, tracing cases. And I'm just very proud of what Clackamas County has done. We were the first in the state to have an emergency ordinance. And because we were where we looked at the science, we tried to address the concern the best we could. And we probably saved lives in Clackamas County by doing that. There's been a lot of pressure to open and there's a lot of pressure not. So it's kind of a catch 22. And that's why I say it's up to you to take care of others here in the future. And I hope that we can all stay safe, stay healthy and that we can get back to work as soon as possible. The county offices will not be open for a while. Our folks are working at home and will be coming here to work. But we, it's important that not only do we protect you, the residents, we also need to protect our employees who are vital to getting this county back to work. So with that, thank you very much. Have a good Memorial Day and thank you for your service. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.